Good evening. This is Mary Kate de Corsi, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm calling our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. This is an open hybrid meeting at the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded at Auburn Public Library in the Marion Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cablevision. Is anyone else recording the meeting? The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, that included the link and the dial-up information to access this meeting remotely. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on our agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Toth?
Present.
Thank you. Erica Briesacher?
Present.
Vera Crane?
Present.
Nan Johnson?
Present.
Lindsay Baker?
Present.
I'm Mary de Corsi and present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Zeller, APL Director?
Present.
Excellent. Okay, so before we begin, or when we begin, we're first going to look, the first item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes from both December and February. Does everybody have the minutes? Okay. We could just take a few minutes to review them. Do I have a motion to approve the December 2024 minutes? Seconded. Just gonna do a quick roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Vera was already voted. Nan?
Yes.
And Mary de Corsi approved, so that's unanimous. By the way, it's impressive how much progress we've made on these minutes. Now, we're going to look at the February minutes that I provided you in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the February 5th, 2025 minutes?
So moved.
I got Vera's one, Matt is second motion. Do a quick roll call. Matt, that's a yes?
Yes.
Erica Briesacher?
Upstee.
Upstee, okay. There you go. Vera Crane, you already voted, thank you. Nan Johnson?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes, except my name is spelled wrong.
Oh, did I spell it wrong? Did I do that again?
So was my last name, and I just noticed.
I thought we fixed that. Okay, Lindsay, please spell your first name for me. And Briesacher, please.
I-E. I got it backwards. It's like the cheese.
So can you just, can I spell it out and tell me if I got it right? Excellent. Sorry about that. I'll make those changes. Otherwise, we're unanimous with one mistake. Okay. The next item on our agenda is open comment. Does anyone have open comments?
I'd like to ask a question if I may.
Sure.
I would like to, and Cynthia Carey, by the way, I'm a resident of Auburn.
Yes.
And I would like to know what the plan is for the board to be reporting on their finances on an ongoing basis. I know back in November, there was a discussion about finances and how much monies the board had, how much was available to spend. I do know, talking to a board member, that some small amount of money had been spent for just some incidentals. But going forward, is there a plan to have a regular treasures report at the meeting?
Yes, I can speak to that. Thank you for following up. So I have spoken with Mike, and we are now in touch with the town accountant, who has the official record of all of the funds in trust. And we are actively working. And so my hope is, the last time that we reported was October, and I talked to Mike about trying to get a semi-annual report of the funds in trust, which would put us at the April meeting. So my hope is that by then, we can get in touch with Karen and sort that out and get something a little more official on the books. We actually did for this meeting, because we're going to be discussing them, we did print out, so I can share, from the trust funds as of June 30th, 2024, totaled a, came out to $22,118.92 in expendable funds. And the non expendable trust funds as of June 30th were totaled $143,856.67 in the case of these funds. That expendable, non expendable, the non expendable is essentially, in almost all cases, the original amount that was gifted to the town. And the agreement and understanding among the board has been that we would only spend the accrued interest, so thereby preserving, you know, the...
The being held interest.
Yes, yeah, but in perpetuity, those funds will be there, and that we would only touch the accrued interest. But even that $22,000 is a very healthy sum. And so I think we've been waiting for Mike, you know, the permanent director, to come back on board. And yeah, so we're looking forward to making some plans. And we will actually be discussing those funds this evening in regard to the strategic plan. But yeah, no, there's a very healthy amount. I don't remember the exact amount, but it was less than $100 that was spent on just buying the little plaques to accompany the portraits. So otherwise, we haven't touched those funds.
And everything that you just discussed is going to be added to the minutes when I host them to Auburn.
Yeah, we can append that, yes, absolutely.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Nope, she covered it. I have reached out to the town accountant, that was only a few days ago, though, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Cynthia. So the next item on the agenda, I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with a few former members of the staff from the Auburn Public Library. Former library employee Marie Carbonne reached out to me by letter last year. And I didn't, at that time, there was a lot going on, so I didn't feel comfortable responding to her at that point. But she talked a lot about the culture of the library and wonderful things in the past. And as you all know, I'm very interested in the work of staff in the past and the board in the past, what we're doing right now, and then connecting that with the future. It's just very, very important to me. So I provided you with just some, my question to them was simple, over breakfast on February 21st at the Heritage, I said, can you talk to me about the components, in your opinion, as former employees? What is a really good, healthy library, a vibrant, we call it the hub? These are the things that they recommended. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their recommendations and their time. They said friendly staff, an interest assessment to ensure that patrons have input, professional development opportunities for staff to grow and network with other professionals, alignments with CW Mars Professional Network, reference sheets to allow patrons to request collections and materials that we might not have. They talked about a coffee area for patrons, story hours, and they talked about the importance of the Friends of APL partnership. And then they also talked, and I apologize for that typo, I'll fix it before we both did. It's supposed to say theme t-shirts with an R. Sorry, everybody. For staff to promote summer reading. If I was the only one that would do that, of course, the school administrator of all people. One of the things that was really cool, when we went out to visit Webster, there was certain library day, they were all wearing Hawaiian shirts. It was just cool. And at one point, I was so interested in talking with them, that I didn't notice the shirts. I was so focused on what they were saying. And then one of the staff said, Mary, do you see that we're all matching? And I looked around, like, oh, look at that, you are. But it was charming, and I just thought that that would be awesome to bring that to us. And I know that a lot of these things are right underway.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of the stuff we are currently working on. I mean, I can speak to that if anybody wants to know.
Does anybody want to, or do you want to just take that under for the next meeting? Like, what are those, those comments that they made was about, like, I know the staff is friendly currently, interest assessments, you have that going out tonight? Can you talk about this? Because this, I happened to come by and say hi to you when the staff member from the Central Administration for Mass, can you talk about that? Like, just the professional development and some kind of ideas that you have?
Yeah.
Again, I want to honor the ladies who might be watching tonight.
Of course, yeah, there's all sorts of different opportunities. So you're referencing, you came in last, the last two Fridays ago?
Yeah, Friday the 21st, yeah.
When Sarah Segigian, who is the head of the Massachusetts Library System, was here to visit. She's an old friend, because she used to work at Shrewsbury, so.
Good, good.
But yeah, she was really excited to do that. Massachusetts Library System provides a lot of different opportunities for staff professional development. They run workshops, they, there are also that free consulting service, they're the folks who sent the consultant for the space study a number of months ago, but they also offer all sorts of consulting services for staff professional development. There's also a variety of, through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, they offer different professional development opportunities. CW Mars, our network, runs a variety of different workshops on things. There is a program, and I'm blanking on, I believe it's through the MBLC, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, called the Library Juice Academy. And I had forgotten about it, actually, until one of our interview candidates brought it up the other day, and I was like, oh yeah, I need to talk to my staff about that. It's a, it's free classes, and they're free, like, instructor-run classes, like, you actually have classes that, they're all virtual, but you go to, and they're on all sorts of, there's like dozens of these things every semester, and they do all sorts of different library topics. So I mentioned that to my staff. I've already got them, obviously, because I don't want to parent them, like, they're adults. I've got them all signed up for the different Massachusetts, the different mailing lists that Listserve. So they'll see all these opportunities, because MLS, MBLC, CW Mars, and the stuff through the Listervs constantly. So they've, and they've already been latching on to some of the stuff.
Awesome.
Kaitlin's going to do a public speaking class. Dan has already signed up for the Aspen Committee. Aspen is the, not Aspen, the region, but it's the overlay for our catalog. So he's been going to those committee meetings lately, and there's just a lot of other opportunities. There's so much stuff out there, it's more an issue of people having time.
Awesome.
That's good, there's so many opportunities, if they've got an opportunity from Auburn, if you've got some way to let them access it.
Yeah, oh yeah, yep, yep.
Great. Anything from the board? No, I mean, no pressure, but if you want to address any of the things, we won't mind.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're going to be talking about the Patron Satisfaction Survey.
Nice site.
That should, I did make, I know I printed out copies, I did make like two little tweaks to the demographic part after I printed everything out. But yeah, we'll be able to start sending that out either tomorrow or Friday, assuming everyone's okay with it. And obviously, I've been meeting with folks from MLS and MBLC and CW Mars, so we're trying to get Auburn more in line with standards and practices. I've been working with the Friends, they've been super helpful with everything, with our CANBA, access to CANBA, and helping us move along all of our weeded items in ways that are also adding, you know, supportive funds to the library, which is excellent. Yeah, I don't know if there's anything else.
Yeah, and just, just like theme, you know, theme, sort of team-building kind of theme thing. People on the outside come in and they see it.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of positive.
Yeah, I've been talking to Dory a little bit about if we can do like casual days or something in the group, so.
Great.
We'll see.
So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So Matt added, we'd like to add comments from the trustees. So Matt, did you want to leave that?
The only thing, no, I wanted to talk a little bit about not just ignore that annual report that you wrote. And I just want to mention, I think we've made such a strong statement to thank all people that have gotten where we are today. And I think that is, that, the opening paragraph really is excellent. It just tells everybody that you've done a wonderful job, and we're really happy. And that our lives are better because of all the work you've done. The report itself is excellent, I just didn't want to bypass that.
Awesome.
Annual report for the town, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
When will that be published? Sorry, Matt, when will the annual report be published?
I should answer that.
So the question, in case you didn't hear it, is when will the actual annual report be placed in the booklet that will be published for the Auburn residents?
Well, I think that's going to be the May meeting.
Oh, yeah.
That's when it typically comes out. So maybe it's, I don't know if it's too late or not. But I, no one's asked for it earlier, so we didn't, we didn't know it.
So I want to make sure that I understand, because I did the annual report for like what happened in 2024. Are you referring to, did I miss a piece of what you just said?
Well, what you just did, the 2024 report.
Oh, yeah, that was, will definitely be included in the town report, and I believe it does, the book comes out in May, is that right?
That's for that annual town meeting, yeah.
Okay, great, great. I didn't know if you were talking about something different.
Yeah.
Any other comments in terms of comments from trustees, Matt, or anyone else?
I have a question, and that's, we got the notice about the new program too, with MLB, MBLC. The problem is, well, it tells you to sign up for that. That's the one with the demographic and census reporting.
Yeah.
It was sent out March 3rd. Mike sent that out to everybody. And we can't get online with that, I can't sign in. And so what we have to do to be able to get online, it's for the library applications at ZipApp.
Okay, I'll do some digging into that, I'll find out what you have to do to get access to that.
Okay, and, oh, the Youth Services Librarian, that, I really, I don't know, didn't get much of a chance last time to say anything, but I think that that was really well done. I think it really brings out everything, so many things that we talked about for years. And it really is a good description of all the things that I think we need. I hope that, that you can fill that thing, someone will feel it's qualified as soon as you get it announced. I'm sure you're working on it.
Yeah, we are, we've been, we've been having interviews, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping we'll be wrapping things up in the not-too-distant future.
Great. All right, that's it.
Anybody else? Nope? Okay, so we're going to move on to number five, update on community feedback survey, Mike.
Oh, sure. So you have all had a chance to, let me just take one last note, so I don't forget to check into Matt's thing. So you've all got the latest version, I made copies for everybody, so it should be this guy.
Great.
Thank you. And I think you've all had a chance to look at it already. Like I said, I made one little tweak to, actually, after Lindsay and I talked, we ended up adding a demographic section to the very end, just so we can get a little bit of clarity on like who is answering that. And I did make one little tweak to that, I broke out children and teens to a separate, so it's like one to 11, and one-year-olds are going to be answering survey.
I'm definitely having Robert call this out.
Staving.
Yeah, he's a radio.
But I broke it out like one to 11, and then 11 to 19, and then 20 through 60, which that's a, I understand that's a big demographic, but it's just sort of adult. Yeah, there's a lot going on in those years. So my plan is to create a QR code that links to this survey, and then append that to all of our checkout receipts. And then, you know, people who are checking out items can scan that and can fill it out. I'll have us, I'll have to come up with a slightly more, I don't want to give everybody a big packet like this, because that looks terrible, I'll come up with a more streamlined way of creating paper copies that we can give out at the desk and everything to, hand out at programs. But unless anybody has any other feedback or questions or anything.
You need to have a copy if you've got an excellent.
Oh, did you not?
You can have mine up on my computer.
Oh.
Okay, are people going to be able to go to one of the computers that do this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll post the link. I guess we can just put it right on the homepage, too, I'll make a note to do that. Yeah, we can just put the link right on the homepage, so anybody who wants to can fill it out.
Great idea.
Yeah, and definitely, if anybody has any other recommendations about locations, we can promote it, just let me know.
Is it possible, I like the QR code, but is it also possible to dedicate one computer so that it's on there, people can just go fill it out?
Yes, sir.
Like in the library, just have a computer that that's...
That's, I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but I was just, it's just...
Well, I think if you, I just, because I just logged into the internet here, and you're required to go to a browser, and it automatically defaults to the public library homepage, so I think if you just put it prominently there...
Yeah, I mean, right along.
Anytime you log into the internet on the library, you're going to be directed there. And if you put a prominent feature there with the survey, that would probably be sufficient.
I really like, I can't even imagine what else we could ask.
It did, it did feel, I tried to make it as comprehensive as possible without overwhelming. I still think it should only take people about five to 10 minutes to fill out, so.
Yeah, it's straightforward, it's nice and simple. Yeah. Great. Any other comments?
That's good.
The next item, Matt, the next item on the agenda is the Space Consultation Discussion, number six.
Wow. How many years have we talked about this? Nan?
Many.
Thank you, Mike, for setting one up.
I got it probably on my email.
Yeah, I gave everyone, I actually printed out copies for everyone, so it should be, I think so.
Maybe she wasn't...
Did I not, maybe I did.
It's color. Oh, it's the color one?
Yes.
We cut it last meeting.
Yeah, we just get it, like I was focused on...
No, maybe I didn't do that.
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
Well, did, I can hand her on my notes.
Oh, it's okay. Well, if we can, if you can hit the salient point, I read, I read it, and I was very impressed, I was very impressed with the fact that, you know, Dory moved that forward while she was here, because it was a request that Vera had very strong feeling about. You do that.
I had a copy, yeah, actually, oh, here, I've got one extra copy, since you haven't seen it yet.
Sure.
So.
It's okay if I write on them?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, no, I read it.
Um, yeah, I can just kind of skim through things, so, and I'll talk a little bit about what we've done on this so far. I should add, Vera knows this already, and Lindsay does too, Kristy Farrer, who is the consultant from MLS that helped us with this, is actually coming back on Friday, since now I'm here, and I have a few more, which I can touch upon, a few more focused questions that I want to ask her about furniture and things like that. But, but yeah, so if anybody, Vera is going to be here with us, if anybody else wants to swing by on Friday to meet with Kristy about things, she will be here. So some of the stuff I've already started to address, some of this I want to talk with her a little bit more about on Friday to get a little more specific. But, you know, overall, her overall emphasis was on kind of reducing some of the clutter and accumulation, and creating out more space for staffing and for staff activities. We're already working on that, I know Dory had done a bunch before I got here, I did some. I've been reaching out to local library directors to come in, and just, if their Youth Services folks want to take some of our excess, obviously, I'm not giving away our core items, but things where we just, we have way too much more than we're ever going to use. So some of them have already come by to collect things, and we're just kind of whittling it down to free up some of the office space for the additional staff that we're planning on hiring. And actually, I've been giving like some stuff to some of the job applicants, and they've been coming in, if they're, if they're a children's person at another library. And also, one of her emphases was on realizing some of the potential in the public spaces, shifting around furniture, changing out furniture, to make the space a little more breathable, a little more workable. Her first section that she talked about was weeding the collection. We're doing a massive weeding project right now, especially with the expansion, if we end up having to move, or even just move things for a while. We want to have to move as little as possible, so getting rid of any of the excess. The Friends have been enormously helpful with that, because as we weed carts, it just goes right over to them, and then right out the door. So yeah, so we're doing a big part of that. Issue has just been, yeah, space of weeded items, and then staffing time to, you know, to hold on. Staff have been kind of rotating, taking some vacations lately, so, which is awesome. But it means we're a little bit even more shorthanded than usual. She talked a little bit about dynamic shelving, or a more bookstore display, and that's something that she told us, it was very funny, she did a space study at Shrewsbury, right as I was leaving, and that space study here, right as I was coming here. So she said a lot of the same things in Shrewsbury, her comment that she kept going back to is basically, if a book is not in a designated display, it's functionally in storage. If you just, like, all of your books that are just lined up spine out, like, people aren't, they're not going to take them unless they're looking specifically for them. But the books that are on display, that are cover out, that's the stuff that people are going to get excited about when they're browsing. So one of the things that I'm going to talk to her about is finding some more shelving units that are more accommodating to that kind of a display. Obviously, we can't display everything cover out, that's just not practical.
Right.
But to maximize that, especially for our new or more curated titles, I should mention too, this is a real aside, but just so everyone's aware of it, once I've taken care of kind of all of the hiring processes that we're working on, once we've got the strategic plan a little more settled, my top priority is going to be getting our acquisition system a little more streamlined, just coming up with, Shrewsbury had a very good system, so I'm basically going to just steal it from them, but just a very good way of setting the pace for constantly ordering new materials, and then constantly weeding older materials. I don't think that should take too, too long, but... I don't think that should take too, too long, but it's really important, because until we have that set up, we're kind of just being a scatter shot with things. She also talked about the space from the user's experience perspective. Going back to the bookshelves, creating situations where you have more line of sight, so renting bookshelves that are a little bit lower, and orienting them in a way so that people can see across the space a little bit more easily. I think that's a great idea. She brings it up a little bit later in the report, but getting furniture, especially shelves that are on wheels, so as needs change, as, you know, patron interest shift, we can move things around, and we're not just having to like totally tear the building apart all the time. That was another thing in Shrewsbury that worked very well. We created a lot of modular furniture, so if one arrangement wasn't working, we could very easily shift things without having to like make it a big production. She emphasizes a lot of ways that we could gather statistics on patron use. I'm not going to delve into that, but I think it's a, it's a good idea, and once we've got some.
I thought that was very interesting, who's where, when.
Yeah, and we did that in Shrewsbury to some effect with some of our seating, so once we've got some more staff on board and people have time to do a little bit more monitoring, it's very useful, and it will often produce very clear results for who's actually using the building.
I wonder though how much we'll learn, because we're kind of limited in what we've got for areas. People come in and they're like to the newspaper section, and that's where they pay.
Yeah, but, you know, issues about when, what time of day people use things, what furniture people gravitate towards. I mean, I know Dory, even just in the short time that she was here, pointed out a few areas, and she was like, nobody ever uses this furniture, nobody's ever over here. So then.
Wasted space.
Yeah, wasted space. We can clear it out, we can get some new furniture. You know, if we notice that people are sitting in certain types of chairs all the time, and not other types of chairs, scrap that other stuff and get more of the good stuff.
Which brings us to the point, if we really have a budget, it will accommodate our changes?
Yeah, there's some, there's some money budgeted for furniture that we can, we can work on. And it is something that I was previously talking to Ed, and I'm talking to Dory about as well, so there are, there are options for furniture. One of the things that I'm going to talk to Kristi about on Friday is just specific brands and things, so I can start to price things out, and see what is this actually going to cost us. But I think this is all, you know, it's not going to all happen at once, but it's all very surmountable. She did talk about like pods, study pods, so that's something that we can look into.
A couple I really liked. Otherwise, it looks like a telephone booth. I wouldn't like to stay there at all.
There's, I don't know if, do you folks ever see any of the invites to the MHCC, the Expo, it's called? It's the municipal government expo that they do at the, oh my gosh, I always forget this, at the the big center area, the civic center down in Worcester.
DCU?
Yeah, the DCU, down in Worcester. And it's really nice, and they have all of these government vendors come in and show off, and it's usually catered, and the food is really good. But it's a really good, it's a really good opportunity to get hands-on with things. We all get invites as part of municipal employees. I don't know if trustees are specifically invited, but I can look into that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it's just you get hands-on, you can talk to some of the vendors, you can kind of put them on the spot if you have more pointed questions. But it's a good experience. Yeah, some of the pods are really nice. It's just an issue of space.
Expense, really.
They're very expensive, and kind of where they go. When Sarah was here two weeks ago, she recommended two libraries for me to go visit. I don't think I've been to before, but Bellingham, she says, has a very similar layout to Auburn. And Waymouth, she said, is just like a beautiful library that makes very interesting, you know, positive furniture and layout decisions. So I'll plan on that, and probably will take some staff along, and if any of you want to tag along as well, that could be an interesting trip.
Field trip.
Went down that one.
I would love to go.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Dory has very much endorsed taking some field trips, so. Yeah, she makes a lot of very specific furniture recommendations, which you can see in her files that I've sent you.
Can I just encourage you on that note, Millbury, right down the street, has a very interesting setup, and we noticed, Vera and Todd and I went in one Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember, but they, they're very cozy spaces for periodicals. People just, it was very, just the way that they use furniture and space is very interesting. It's a very intimate library. And what they did was, it's similar to this library, but they had the original building, and then they built structures within it so that there's different, you know, different platform, what would you call it, ledges, where you go up, you know what I mean, guys? You go up a staircase, and then there's a different, there's different floors, but it has a big open space, yes, sort of like platforms or balconies are what I'm trying to say, not coming out, thank you. But it's really neat. I would encourage you, it's literally three miles down the road on Elm Street, but it's a lovely library. They have the original Carnegie Building, but they built within it, and they made it work.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, that sounds great. She mentioned a few acoustic consultants that we could talk about, because the ceiling in this building, and that was something Sarah talked about, too. She was like, why is the ceiling so high? I don't, I don't know. That's a good question.
To give the impression of space, start a small space.
That's true, yeah, yeah, so. But she made some recommendations on people we could talk to about, I don't know if we'll have the funds for that, but offer some options. I highlighted this in particular, because I thought it was a very easy fix. I mentioned about the staff having to haul the tables all the way from the back. So I just cleared out that, well, I had Caitlin clear out that back room, and now we've just got the tables right back.
Oh, great.
Just coming right from here. And I think to her point, though, we probably need some better tables. But in the meantime, they're just walking a few feet instead of across the entire building, and we have to shift things around. Yeah, they are heavy. She mentioned something about charging stations or charging tables, and that's definitely something. Every single library that I've ever gone to, any librarian that I've ever talked to, every library building project that I've ever tangentially been aware of, everyone always says patrons want more outlets, they want more charging stations, they want places, because everybody nowadays has a laptop, and a cell phone, and a tablet. So I know the electrical bandwidth of any of the work that we want to do, we need to be acutely aware of that, because everybody wants this kind of stuff. Some discussion about the expanding the teen area, and work that we could do either with that space or moving into part of the older kids' area. There's some options there. We actually did go out and pick up a gaming system and some gaming equipment, which I'm hoping to, I was thinking about doing it this Friday, but it's been just way too busy with interviews and things, but start to have like a Friday afternoon gaming thing, just in here, like have the kids come in and.
Do you know we have these virtual reality headsets into that?
Yes, they're in the back somewhere. They are, I saw them, I can't remember exactly where, but they are excellent, still, they're there. Yeah, I was very excited when Jared told me about those, so.
So can I make another suggestion? Leicester Library, right in the center of Leicester, has a beautiful teen set. They have high, like high tables with like, you know, sort of like swivel chairs, and they do a lot of neat, attractive, like you said, display things to try to draw the teens in. They have games open, chess, you know, whatever the games are that the kids like, but it's, and the gaming system. So I just encourage you to take a look. It's really close.
We, when I was at Shrewsbury, we had a really nice teen area as well, and somebody had, somebody has a nice gaming space. We, well, we did, we, for a while, we, pre-COVID, it kind of died off a little bit with the pandemic, and came back in a more, it's slightly changed way, but we had a really good, like, teen gaming thing in Friday afternoons. They would come down, you know, a couple dozen of them.
That's right. That's great. That's what we wanted.
She recommended getting rid of some of the toys in the children's room. I agree, I think it's a little over-stuff. And what I've had Caitlin doing is, yeah, she's been a real whirlwind lately, clearing out some of just the ratty, nasty toys that are over in the children's room, and then using some of the stuff, the really nice, you know, new, unused stuff that we've got in the back, and kind of rotating that out, so. Yeah, any questions, anybody having, can pass around my notes if anybody wants.
And this, this thing was really, it just makes me so optimistic. We asked about this, and part of it was that we were told that there was tremendous cost for doing anything like this. As Dory came in, the connection with MBLC, and this is amazing.
Yes, it is.
Yep. About what could happen. Getting us just closer to, I think the library Auburn actually deserves.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, when Sarah was here two weeks ago, when she was going around, she did keep saying like, there's a ton of potential in all of this space. It's just an issue of, you know, shifting some things around, getting rid of some stuff, adding a few things here or there, but she kept saying like, wow, you've got so much potential here.
Since we missed out on any kind of renovation, we've got to deal with what we've got as well, so.
But I think what we were very excited about is your vision as the leader to what the space will look like. So, and again, thanks to Dory for making this materialize so quickly after we had talked about it, so that's exciting.
Yeah, MLS is really good, and they have a lot of consulting, like they'll do this kind of stuff. They'll also do like leadership training, they'll do, you know, all sorts of staff trainings and things, too.
Well, this came out at MLS.
Yes, this is MLS.
You know what? I just saw MBLC on it. That's all I saw.
She might have been recommending some of those. Yeah, and they, obviously, they work very closely together, so.
So she recommended removing the CD format, and our understanding was that it was popular with patrons, but of course, you're looking at data, so.
Yeah, yeah, it depends. I mean, we scrapped, at Shrewsbury, we scrapped CDs, but from what Molly and Dave and some of the folks here said, some of the patrons do still use CDs. I mean, when I was at Worcester years ago, people were still borrowing VHS tapes, like, they would borrow them. They didn't have a DVD player at that time. So if it's circulating here, definitely the overall vibe in libraries is phasing out CDs, but if they are circulating here, I think, you've been saying some of the CDs have been some of the best-selling.
We're going to get some bucks off those, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my primary question, was I thought that, you know, because there are things that I make assumptions about with regard to optimal library stuff. And then the reality is there are people who like this thing, but I think, why are we even doing it? You know, and then this other thing that I think would be great, actually, nobody has any interest, so I was just curious where it fell with that, with the CDs.
Yeah, I think we'll probably keep them around, just because I'm hearing that people are using them. I don't think we'll expand the section, but I don't think. And they're not taking up a ton of space, so.
Is it the same with DVDs, of those in high-voltage? I just feel like there is this, the whole back wall of the children's area is DVDs, and it's not in a spot where any kid could even reach, and they're like hard to read, and I'm curious if that's been a similar.
I haven't pulled stats on that. Again, I just have Shrewsbury to reference from, and the DVDs were still circulating in Shrewsbury. I will say, as more and more companies go pure streaming, though, physical releases are, like, eventually that's going to go, just because I think that's the way the wind is blowing, but they are still circulating.
Yeah, none of these questions are meant to discourage anything that's happening. I was just curious.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely don't want to discourage, because I also think like those streaming services now, to have all of them, it's more expensive than even cable used to be, and so I think there's definitely a need for it. I guess maybe the future is that libraries find a way to supplant the streaming, but who knows?
There's canopy.
Okay, okay.
There are library streaming services, and any library I know that has used those has found them very, very successful.
But also, there is the push to go back sometimes to the physical media, because like if you purchase on streaming, you own a license until it's gone. So it's like, there is kind of a weird undercurrent of, well, maybe we shouldn't get rid of it yet.
As somebody who spent part of this afternoon poking around a thrift store for Blu-rays, yeah, I appreciate physical media.
Okay, anything else on that item? Okay, the next item I'm very excited about, so we need to talk about strategic planning agenda items. So Lindsay has been kind enough to set this up perfectly so that we can move forward, and then they're going to do a presentation. So we have two votes on the table that we need to, I need a motion on. The first one is a vote to confirm Lindsay Baker as co-chair alongside Mike Zeller, library director of the library. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Strategic planning committee, not of the whole library.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Vera Corain?
Yes.
Nan Johnson?
Absolutely.
Lindsay Baker?
Can I vote it myself?
Yes, so that's unanimous. The second vote that we need to confirm would be vote to confirm Vera Corain as a BOT representative member on the library strategic planning committee. Do I have a motion? Thank you. I got, Lindsay got you first this time. So Matt, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Erica?
Yes.
Vera, you can vote for yourself. Yes, excellent, Nan?
Yes.
Excellent, and I support you 100%. Excellent. So the next item on the agenda is our presentation by Mike and Lindsay of proposals, feedbacks supplied, cost, payment, and recommendation for consultancy.
So I think in front of us, we have three, four documents that will be useful for this conversation. So the first is just a little background on Barbara Alavres, who is the consultant through Sage Consulting Services. I guess the very brief on her is she actually supported us through our prior strategic planning process. She has just tons and tons of experience. If you go to pretty much any library in the area, strategic plan, you will see her stamp on it. She has been involved in, so she's very tuned into like local community needs. She's really plugged in, I think. And I think is a standout candidate for, you know, this going forward, and so we'll submit this and make sure the town can also read about her professional background and things, but, but yeah, just a little bit of background of her. And then we've also supplied, and we can talk about these as we go through the presentation, but there's just a sample flow chart of what sort of the process will look like for the strategic planning project. And then we supplied in print what is called proposal number three for the services that Barbara is proposing to provide us. This is the proposal that we would like to put forward for a vote this evening, so I'm happy if we want to take a moment to review it. In advance of the call, we had circulated proposal one and proposal two, which Barbara explained were sort of like the VIP Rolls Royce plan, and then the sort of like, a sort of lighter touch, yeah, and so proposal three, just for context, hits right in the middle of those two. So I don't know if everyone wants to take a minute and just kind of skim through, and then we can do that.
I have proposal one and two. I don't have proposal three.
Matt, I will email it to you right now.
You know what? Okay, the trouble is, if I go to my computer, I'm going to lose contact, and my iPad, I can't seem to.
Well, we're happy to walk through it, too, but I'm, yeah, maybe we just do that. Yeah.
The, there's really only two, proposal three is basically proposal one with two differences, basically. It's the removal of one of the SOAR exercises for staff, and what was that section?
Yeah, so Matt, so if you are looking at proposal number one, and you go to the deliverable three,
Okay.
Three A, bullet point A. We had just downsized to one SOAR exercise with up to 15 participants instead of the two. And the reason for that is she mentioned, was it MBL? And the reason for that is she mentioned, was it MBLC or MLS? MLS will offer a free SOAR exercise for staff if Mike and the team decide that they want to do that. So we thought it made, it was just cost effective to remove it from Barbara's proposal. So we can still do a SOAR for the staff, but we omitted it from this proposal to just save a little bit of money. And then the other change was in the following bullet, which was deliverable for the community survey. We opted to omit the youth survey. Barbara highlighted that it was, that many do just have the single community survey. It simplifies and makes it less time consuming to analyze the data. And Mike noted in the patron survey, and we've confirmed with Barbara, that we could just have demographic information that is the same across the surveys so that we can still slice and dice the data and, you know, pull out the youth feedback on its own. But we just thought, again, for efficiency, because of our tight timeframe, we thought those were two reasonable omissions without really digging into the quality or quantity of data that we thought we could get. So, and she was amenable to those changes, so that's all. Proposal three is proposal one with just those two omissions.
And then what would be the cost of number three?
Yes, yeah, so the final cost, where is it, you got it, you go ahead.
So the final cost for proposal number three was $4,675, which is a pretty substantial savings from proposal one. Proposal one was five.
It was, it was a $1,128 reduction from proposal one. So a significant savings by just removing the two things.
Yeah, yeah, so I feel like, you know, considering that we're already also doing the community feedback survey, that was kind of why when Lindsay and I were talking before, we ended up adding the demographic section to the patron satisfaction survey. So I think we'll end up having the data that we need anyways, but this will save us some money and a little bit of time.
Yeah, and Mike and I think in reviewing the proposals, we wanted to have this be a pretty robust engagement from the consultant just because it is a very tight timeframe. I believe that the last planning process was extended over almost a full year and we only have eight months. Now, we could request an extension, but I think in talking with Vera, you know, we were talking and thinking about this planning process and then with Mike, I think we all just really want to close the chapter and start fresh. And because this ends in December, we really want to target that and just kind of push to get this done. And Barbara said that she really thinks that we can pull this off in that timeframe. So I think I can give you, where did I put my notes? So, you know, just to jump to it, basically, the schedule that she thinks that this would look like is, so in April, we would conduct the SOAR surveys, the SOAR workshops, one for the strategic planning committee, one for kind of a combined, probably Board of Trustees, friends of the library, you know, those that aren't on the planning committee. And in April, it would also be prepping for the community survey, so preparing the questions. In May, we would actually conduct the survey, circulate it, get it out to our channels, and prep for the focus groups, which she explains, we would basically recruit participants via surveys. So for efficiency. That would mean that by June, we would hope to conduct the three focus groups that she, you know, would be contracted to moderate. Those would each have 10 people maxed. Then over the summer, would be really analyzing and summarizing all of the data collected from surveys, from SOARS, from the, you know, from the focus groups, which would leave essentially September through November for compiling a community profile, you know, updated from the last time. And I think Vera, you've already done a pretty good job of kind of getting us, you know, getting us to date. And I think we can just leverage work that you've already done and just make sure that we've got the latest numbers and things to include and then really just preparing the final strategic document so that by December, we could approve and get that baby submitted to MBLC. So, I mean, it's going to move fast and we may, I think the one thing is we may need to convene an additional meeting or two. We may not be afforded as much of a summer recess as we traditionally have had, but I feel like we all have such great energy around this that I can feel again, whenever I talk to my guests, like I really think everyone's going to be all hands on deck for this process. So, yeah, so that's the big one. That's the big announcement, so.
Which of these times would be for Zoom that you can decide on?
What do you mean, like?
Virtual.
So that is one, that's a good point to the left. That is one stipulation with Barbara is that all of this would be remote. There would be no in-person component.
Well, not with Barbara. We could plan to convene in person, but she would need to be virtual. She has personal, very valid personal reasons for needing to stay.
It was the last time.
Yes, yeah. She continues to need to be remote, to moderate, but she's, I mean, she said she's done dozens of these and she's very confident that she'll be able to do it. So yeah, that is an important stipulation, that Barbara would need to be virtual.
Right, we were very modest with her last time. And we were used to moving slow for so long, we don't mind to pick up the pace a little bit.
She seemed very, very confident that this is a very manageable on the table. She didn't seem like, she didn't seem to feel like things would be rushed or curtailed or anything. We did, we did go back to her with some questions about, are you sure we can fit this all in? And she seemed very, very confident.
Awesome, so we open up for discussion before we vote? Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
Really, she's very straightforward. When something is possible, she's honest about that. When it's not possible, she is really, really good. And I think we would easily make a commitment to the kinds of things that you and Mike have identified we need to do in our responsibility, because I'll tell you, what you're doing now is a lot different than what we've had to do. And really, I'm excited about participating in whatever way you need it.
Great, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. So we're open for discussion, thank you, Matt. Anybody want to add anything else before we move to motion? Any discussion, any questions?
So, okay, so what I'm hearing you say is we saw a more in-depth look at options one and two initially for the strategic plan. And option three is basically option one with the removal of two things that we can otherwise get through either unpaid resources or through data parsing.
Which is, yeah, consolidation and data parsing, yep, that's a good summary.
Okay, so no loss of content?
Nope.
Yeah, no, I was, yeah, I was actually pretty surprised at how much those two things shaved off the cost.
So was I. But please, yeah, please, that was a significant savings.
I'm sorry, Vera, what were you saying?
Oh no, I was, I was, I don't know if you can see me, but I'm sensing my head waiting for your voice.
Well, now I'm going to ask the hard question, where does the money come from?
Yeah, well, I was curious. Do you want to explain the three sources that we considered?
No, this is great, this is great. And I want to compliment Lindsay, you had this set up so beautifully that I just cut and paste it. So we will, she'll explain that and then we'll vote on both, whether we're on for the final recommendation and whether we agree on the payment method for this engagement. So go ahead, Lindsay.
Sure, well, yeah. So we, Lindsay and I kind of talked around a few different options for funding this. We had talked about maybe doing like a budget transfer from, since we've been down some staff this year, since there were some other options. But looking at this year's budget, especially with adding in some new staff at some slightly higher salary levels, we really don't have as much flexibility there. There's not a lot of wiggle room with the budget. We had also talked about using state aid. My preference with state aid is to be very protective of it, to kind of use it only in emergencies because it is such an open and flexible funding pool. You have a lot fewer restrictions than you do with like municipal funding or things like that. So I'd rather, if it came to that, that's fine, but I think if we've got other funding sources. And then we also talked about the trust funds, which, given how they've historically operated and given the fact that there does seem to be a fairly meaningful accumulation in the expendable portion of that, that's what we're towards recommending. Because I think this is not something that we're going to do all the time. It's a fairly nominal expense. And since the trust funds fall under the trustees jurisdiction, in a sense, it makes sense to use that in this context.
Matt, can I ask who paid for the last strategic plan?
The town. And I'm wondering, have you asked Dory if she's willing to contribute a few bucks?
I can, we did talk about budget transfers and she was the one who said we're kind of tight with the staff thing, so.
Or even the town.
The town writ large, not just the library budget.
Oh, I can.
It's worth a try, but I think this is important enough that we do what we need to do.
I didn't, I haven't gone to finance committee yet because that would have been tonight. Yeah, I can.
I don't think that should stop us. I don't mean that at all, but I'm just worried if the town will be willing to, because it is to the benefit of the town as well.
Okay, so I think then there's two ways that we could take a vote on this. So Barbara has broken it down into three payments, into like essentially a payment plan, because right, you don't pay a friend for everything until the service is delivered. So the breakdown in proposal three, which again, the total is $4,675. Payment one would be due by April 1st, and that is in the amount of $1,175. Payment two would be due by August 1st, and that's in the amount of $1,750. And the third and last payment would be due by December 1st in the amount of $1,750. So we could opt to approve out of the trust funds, the first payment amount, which would then at least allow us to pay the first installment and give time for Mike to do a little bit of follow-up on, you know, procuring maybe, you know, at least a portion of this from town fund. But I, yeah, I don't know if anyone has strong feelings. I think if we have some options, we have some flexibility. So if we're only comfortable approving a portion tonight, that would be, I think, my strategic recommendation. Only again, because if we don't do it tonight, we have to wait till April, then we can't get going until, you know, a little later than planned, so.
The other option is what Lindsay and I discussed, which is kind of what I would prefer just because I'm going to be the one who's signing this and saying that we're spending it, is the board could vote to spend up to, you know, what was it, $4,675? $4,675. And then if we get additional funds from town, we can just sub that in. That way I'm not theoretically perjuring myself.
That's truly fair. So Matt, I didn't hear.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Yeah.
What were you going to say, Vera, you had something?
I think we have to vote on which proposal we want to go with first.
Okay, yeah, I have, okay, well, first of all, Lindsay, you're right. Well, there's two, she had left those two items. So the first vote is to proceed with the final recommendation. So do I have a motion?
Wait, wait, so move back to proposal three as opposed to proposals one and two?
Yes, is that what you're saying? Okay, very good. So let's, do I have a motion on that? To move to proposal three instead of one or two? I'm sorry, Erica, I wasn't looking up.
No, you're fine.
So Erica is one, do I, I know, I hear you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. And I'm just going to run through a roll call. Erica's, okay, Vera?
Yes.
And Nan?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do I have, did you want to?
Oh, motion to fund up to, let me give you the number.
$4,675. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion for the Board of Trustees to fund up to $4,700.
$675.
$675 if other funding is not obtained in order to do the strategic plan.
Do I have a motion from you?
That's a motion.
That's your motion, all right. I'm sorry.
You're getting it.
Hi, Dory, we're on. We're on TV right now.
Oh, boy.
Sorry, I didn't know, because we're just talking about voting, I didn't know if you were watching us. Okay, good, then I will call you back. Thank you. It's open, the boss calls and Mike goes. I wouldn't have even noticed when her name came up. So just so you know, I called about some clarification about this and Mike answered my question. My questions were, do we need to put it out at the bid? And you said if it's under $10,000, we do not, is that correct?
Yeah.
The second question I had was, do we, what was the second question? I had a second one. Oh, it was about where the monies, which is what we're talking about now. So the timing was perfect. So my, I'm so sorry for the interruption. Would you be kind enough to just word that motion again? Yes, that might even help with the note taking.
I thought she was calling to offer some money.
I saw the, I saw the name come up.
All right, motion for the Board of Trustees to fund up to $4,675 for the strategic plan if we are unable to secure other funding for the same.
So Vera sets that motion forth, who's got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Can I have Erica Briesacker's vote?
Yes.
Nan Johnson?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yeah.
Mary, of course, is a yes. Outstanding work team. Do we need to add anything else before we move to the next meeting? Anything else from Lindsay or Mike? You guys have done an awesome job tonight and I thank you.
No, I think the only thing is, one question I had outstanding was just for the board, just for discussion, was in terms of building a strong strategic planning advisory committee, that's what Barbara refers to as the SPAC, which is a terrible acronym. But I think I wanted to talk now with this group just to see if we had suggestions, ideas about who might be good additions, right? So right now it's Vera and I to represent the Board of Trustees. Mike is obviously lead and primary POC with Barbara and kind of head chair of this. But then, you know, looking at other strategic plans and folks that they've, I mean, they've included people from the schools, people from community nonprofits, right? So trying to build a broad coalition while also recognizing our very tight timeframe and needing folks that would be available pretty much immediately to join us. Just, and I think representation from the friends would be my very first priority. But then in addition to that, you know, who else might we, might we think would be valuable to include? You know, looking at Shrewsbury, again, they had folks from the schools, they had folks from the local nonprofit. I could see like the cultural committee, maybe they would have someone of interest. But, but again, wanting to be a little agile and move a little quickly here while being inclusive, I think just was curious to kind of crowdsource suggestions.
So I actually have had, you are, I love the word ubiquitous, I hear your name everywhere. You came into town like last week. The other person in town is Pastor Julie Sedroni from First Congregational Church. Literally everywhere I go, I run into her or someone mentions her. She had a conversation with me about her, because I mentioned what a wonderful addition you were to our team and I want her to meet you. She said that it's her vision to really create a network of not just churches and synagogues and places of worship, but a real sense of what is the community? How can we get everybody to work together for, you know, all of our demographics? Not just people who are people of faith, but our kids. And it's a vision that I've had for a long time through an organization that I run, a better use, better, better day for children, youth and families. It's not an agency in the sense that I make money for it, but it's really all about what Pastor Julie's vision is, which is to get everybody at the table. What can we do, what can we, how can we work together? So I just would like to reach out to her and I'd like to kind of see what she has in a vision to bring people together. I'm on the cultural committee, so I, and we are meeting, but I'll send out an email to my, the vice chair and the chair and our membership and see if we can get some feedback. But I love the idea of all of the demographics. And I think that if, and I would be willing to take the lead on that because it's sort of my area of love and interest. But I'd be willing to reach out to all those, and then just figure out how we can get people involved in this library strategic plan.
Well, you know, I think the Board of Select, and we have to have, should have someone from the Board of Selectment on this as well. I just think that that's an important element. I just think that that's an important element. We talked a little bit about the school, whether it's the superintendent or whoever it is from the school. We ought to at least try to get one town leading member from every precinct.
Oh, great.
You know, that, that does represent everybody in town. I mean, it's not, how, how many people Lindsay and Michael were thinking about for this group?
Yeah.
It was, um.
She's got a number, right?
Yeah, I think it was.
Is it on her third proposal?
It should be, yeah. So about fifteen people.
About, yeah, right, yeah. And that's the vision that I was thinking, too. Twelve, fifteen.
Would we want someone from Auburn Newton families?
I was wondering that, too.
That's good. Somebody from the business community?
I would love to meet one of our, one of the people from the Historical Society. That's the other place I heard your name when I popped in, that you had just spoken to them, that was great. So I did the talent over there?
Yeah.
She's a neighbor of yours, Lindsay? And sorry, yeah. I think that, and they were excited about, about working with us.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so just in terms of nominating folks to do the outreach, so Mary's going to reach out to Faith Community Cultural Committee.
I'll do the Historical Society, too, I'll just reach out to everybody.
Okay, yeah, okay. And does that apply then also to AYFS, Business Community?
I, I can do that, but I want to know what the timeframe is, so I can jump on it.
Yeah, um, maybe. AYFS. Okay, Vera, we'll reach out here. And what, what I was thinking, I didn't talk to you about this yet, but we, we did, I had, before we engaged with Barbara, I had started to just outline almost like a charter for this committee, and I've seen templates of this. So I was thinking, we could have like a one pager that we could give to you guys, that you could circulate, so that folks would understand what they're signing up for, because, yeah, because I think, I think it will be three to, three to four meetings to set this up. One of those will be a SOAR, with SOAR exercise, which is what strengths, opportunities, aspirations, I forget what the R is, but. So this will be a bit of a commitment, and it should be in a fairly, you know, a fairly condensed timeframe, and, and we'll make sure to be kind of judicious about planning meetings well in advance and things, but, so just to say that you wouldn't be cold calling, we, we could have a little one pager, I think, so.
That would be nice.
Sounds good.
It's cold calling with a script.
Yeah.
It's a committee charge.
Yes, yes.
It's a committee charge.
Exactly. Okay, so then, do we feel like we have sufficient, I mean, cultural committee, the, the pastor, someone from Board of Selectmen outreach? I guess, I guess my question on the political folks on the Board of Selectmen is, Matt, you had said about outreach to all local precincts, but obviously, you know, fifteen people cap, we, you know, we're going to start to run up against that quickly, and so, do we think that it's sufficient to just reach out to the Board of Selectmen or some of the other committees? That would actually be an interesting way to get in touch with someone in the business community. For example, I'm on, I also serve on the Economic Development Committee, I could put out the word there.
I have somebody who's very interested in Macy's, she's the, she, she's the manager of Macy's here in Auburn, Kate, I want to say her name is Zol, I can't remember her last name right off, but she volunteered to be engaged with us on anything that we need. In addition to being, doing a great job with Macy's, she does a lot of work with nonprofits, so this is right, this is her jam.
Right.
Kate is her name, and it's Kate Z, I can't remember her last.
Mary's our connection.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll put Mary for the, for the business meeting, but on, on the local precincts, one, do we, how, like, how much, how many people is reasonable? Are there too many?
That's, there are five people from the precincts. We could choose, you know, a lottery, which, but you know what, you also ought to have a couple patrons that, Mike, you and your staff probably can select.
Yep, and I'll, I'll reach out to the, I'll reach out to the Friends, too, because I think we.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know that was like the first thing, so, yeah, we want to have a few people from the Friends on there as well. And I can, I can talk to my staff about who might be a, a good, yeah.
And, and also if, if anyone on staff wants to join as well.
Yes.
Which I think that, yeah. All right, then the only one that I think is without ownership is just reaching out to Board of Selectmen and the local. And Vera, I'm looking at you, okay, okay.
I wonder who's going to get picked.
Is that going to work?
Well, you know.
I will say that Dan Carpenter is very invested in this.
I think, I think we all, I think there's a few names that will.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, fantastic. All right, so we will commit then in the next week to getting that circulated to you, and maybe Barbara can give it a one silver, because that's part of the contract, it's her helping us set this all up, so we can lean on her for that and get a one pager out for then advertising and getting folks pulled in.
That would be awesome. And we can figure out before April first if there is any town funding available to fund.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Dory ASAP.
Okay, yeah, so by next meeting, Mike will confirm availability of town funds, and we will circulate ASAP one pager for outreach and hope that maybe by April, we can get some folks with hands up to join our committee, and they will be deeply engaged in this
So using Lindsay's comment about the last meeting, you said we're in a new day. This is very vibrant, I'm very excited and very thankful to both of you for all your hard work and everybody's team effort. So if we've covered all the bases, our next meeting will be scheduled Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, here at the Marion Room, but again, we will be hybrid, Matt will be joining us, and online.
I would be there to bother you directly.
I would love that. I would love for you to bother us directly. So if that is the, if that is the case, we are adjourning the meeting, I need a motion to adjourn at seven sixteen.
Just one question, Mary, because we are usually the first Wednesday of the month, and so that, the second is actually the first Wednesday of April. I'm actually in favor of moving it to the ninth, because there's the Finance Committee and we're having to look at your conflict, but, so I, if, if we're okay with the ninth, I'm great with that, but I just wanted to note that we usually are on the first Wednesday.
Well, we, actually, we, we made this decision in a previous meeting, yeah, no, 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 no problem.
Sorry, thank you.
No, but thank you for bringing it up, because, because in the last email that I sent out, because I had forgotten as well, that we had the second Wednesday, and Matt sent me an email just to remind everybody so that we're on the same page, so thank you for that. No, no, you're right on point, as usual. But so our next, so our next, I said our next meeting is the ninth, at six PM, we will be using hybrid as well, if anyone wants to join us online, then we, I need a motion